Madam Reporter, roll call please.
Alderwoman Keith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison.
Here.
Alder, Alderwoman Adams.
I'm here.
All right, very good. Fellow citizens and guests, will you join me first in prayer? And then following that, pledge allegiance. Father, we come to you today asking for your help, your forgiveness, Lord, where we fail. And we ask that you bless all of us. More especially, Lord, I selfishly deny, I ask that you bless those of us up here making decisions for the town. Lord, you're graceful to us, you take care of us. You're so good to this town. And there's no way that we could praise you enough in order to glorify you. Please continue to watch over us and more especially myself, Lord, I ask for strength and wisdom. All this ask in the precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republi, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, please be seated. Oh, next order of business is citizens' comments. Uh, you do, you are not required to sign up before. Anyone having a comment, please approach podium, state your name and address, please.
Julie Ellen Bacardi, two oh nine Smith Street Extension. I just want to ask y'all, when you did, I don't know if you finished the budget or not, but I hope you've really considered what the police chief asked for us to do. Because I really think the city would benefit from it. And I know the citizens, I've talked to a few, and they really want some more help, you know, and that way, all the cities, not just us, and the county would get help altogether.
Yes ma'am.
And if it doesn't work out, like you said, next year, we don't have to, again. But I really appreciate it if you take it into consideration.
Yes ma'am, thank you very much. Any other citizen or guests like to come to the podium and speak? Ms. Payne, you are recognized.
Carolyn Payne, forty-eight eighteen Bluff City Highway. There's several things on the item tonight, and this is our only time for comments, so I'm just going to approach a few of them, knowing that you're going to discuss and vote on them later. And I guess at this time too, I'm going to please ask again, as we have in the past, that we are allowed, when these items are on the agenda, where it says discussion, that we are allowed to discuss and ask questions.
Uh, yes ma'am, you're, you're welcome to make any comment you like. You actually have about four minutes and forty seconds left.
Uh, well, okay, well, let me move this right along then. Uh, am I going to be able to ask questions on the ordinance on here? The two ordinances and three ordinances, four ordinances?
Well, Ms. Payne, uh, at the will and pleasure of the board, we're not required to answer questions on the ordinances, but we may accommodate, we'll try to.
Well, all right then, first, I guess, order of business tonight is going to be, you are going to be sworn in as mayor.
No ma'am, uh...
It's not going to happen tonight?
The first order of business is discussing the minutes from the last meeting.
But it's going to happen tonight?
Uh, I don't need to be sworn in ma'am, I'm already sworn in.
Okay, great, uh, and you are going to be the city manager, per our charter?
Yes ma'am.
Is there a salary involved in this?
No ma'am.
Okay, so, are you going to be working full-time or part-time?
Uh, full-time ma'am.
Full-time, so you're going to give up your job, I guess?
No ma'am, uh, I'm not.
Okay, uh, is there a benefits package?
No ma'am.
All right.
I'm not compensated for that role potentially.
That sounds good, and is Terry Banner working?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, well, he wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so, well, uh, now tonight's meeting, you're going to vote in a vice mayor?
No ma'am.
That will not be done tonight?
No ma'am.
Okay, uh, and I let Carol, Sandy, Ben, Jeff, I let you know
Yes ma'am, I saw your text.
...your intentions, uh, uh, I want to be considered for the two now-open alderman seats.
Yes ma'am, you will be considered.
Hopefully, this, this will get me a seat on the board.
Okay, any other...
Now, the night that you do that voting, are you going to do both of them at the same time?
I haven't decided yet, ma'am.
Okay, will that go on the agenda when that is decided?
Yes ma'am.
Uh, will it also be noted on the agenda, so it's really kind of fair to everybody? The names of the individuals, since they have to, you are requiring them now, to give you our names. Will those names also appear on the agenda?
They're not required to be on the agenda, ma'am.
I didn't ask that, I asked...
I will consider it.
Okay, well, let's see, I guess, oh, well, when you get to it, the water and sewer, I'm just going to ask one question.
Sure.
Is it mandated?
I'm sorry, is, is what mandated?
Are you going to go up on the water and the sewer?
That has not been decided, ma'am.
Okay, well, it's on the agenda for tonight, so, good, we'll be able to do some discussion on that then. But it is not mandated?
It, that will be decided, ma'am. That is a point of discussion, ma'am.
Okay, but doesn't Nashville do the mandate?
No ma'am, not in this particular case.
Okay, well, I guess I'm left confused, Mr. Frye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Anyone else care to comment, please come up, you'll have five minutes. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move to the next item on the agenda. And that is update on our projects by our friends at Mattern and Craig. And tonight, we're actually fortunate enough to have two of the distinguished colleagues from there, and Mr. Randy Beckner will be speaking. Please, you're recognized, Mr. Beckner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, since our last meeting, I, I think the, the last meeting was just a couple days after your project manager from Mattern and Craig, uh, left the firm. And so I've spent the last month doing a lot of, a lot of digging and, and updating and digging through files. Um, but I've made, we've made some really good progress, uh, this, this month. Um, I, I did get in touch with our rural development, um, contact Mr. Matt Kider to talk about the project and where we stand. Um, I think last meeting, I indicated that I was concerned that he was not going to allow the pump station work to be change-ordered into the project, but he is going to allow that, which is a good thing. Um, our biggest outstanding issue at the time was that we had not done planning profile design sheets on the main street water. And since then, I have got those completed, and I reviewed them with, with the mayor and Alan just before this meeting. Um, they're okay with those, so they will be submitted to rural development and TDEC for final approval. Um, fingers crossed, knocking on wood, uh, I don't see any reason that Thomas should not be back on-site under construction before your next meeting. And if that doesn't happen, you'll see Calvin next month instead of me. Um, other projects, um, First Tennessee Development District had asked us to put together a, uh, basically a letter, preliminary engineering report, for a new water storage tank in the system, uh, in, in hopes of seeking possible COVID relief money for that project. That's been done and submitted to, uh, First Tennessee for them to, to work on the application. Um, I think we still got, uh, outstanding issues with the Chinkapin booster pump station that I've, I've dug through, and I've, I've started putting together some plans on that. Uh, got to get with my electrical, uh, sub, subcontractor and, and get his information in, and should have that ready to go out for bids very shortly. Any questions, any, any projects that I may have missed and may not even be aware of?
No, uh, Randy, that was a good brief, uh, and it surmised the meeting we just had right before here. Uh, uh, you know, what we'll do with the information, the very detailed information that we discussed, is we'll sit down as the staff and as the board and analyze it and be back to you very, very soon.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clifton, do you have any comments, or are you just going to sit out there? Great. No ma'am, you had your portion. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the discussion in action for the regular BMA meeting minutes of July 5th. Does everyone have those meetings, uh, minutes with them, or have they reviewed them? Are there any questions, comments, additions? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to either approve or deny?
Motion to approve, yes.
Motion by Alderman Adams to approve.
I second it.
Second by Alderwoman Keith. Madam Reporter, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Keith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes.
A motion carries by majority and unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a very special one, and that is the resignation and retirement of my good friend, Mayor Richard Bowling. Uh, just a little background, uh, Richard came on board at a very, very difficult time for the town and, and stood up, uh, when we lost Mayor Wells. Uh, he has worked tirelessly to, for the benefit of the staff, uh, for the city in general. Uh, and he's made many improvements in our processes during his time. Uh, he, uh, uh, it, it's like I say, he was a, it was just like the army, Richard. I mean, you were here before they got up and after they left. And, uh, there's no way that, uh, the board and our fellow citizens can thank Richard enough for, for leading us from January to July. And, uh, he has made a decision after deep prayer, is that right, Richard? And, uh, and we're excited about, uh, and I'm certain Suzanne is more excited about his offer. So, that being said, uh, as a point of personal pleasure, Richard, would you like to come to the podium and say a few words before we, uh, move on with this?
Well, it's been a real privilege to work with the city officials and all of you guys on the board, and, and I have really enjoyed it. But as far as my health goes, it's fine and some, and, uh, as Suzanne talked about and prayed about it, especially over the weekend, you know, we talked Friday.
Yes, sir.
And I let you know over the weekend, because I was going to do it Friday, and you told me to wait till Sunday or whatever, and, and, uh, we'll have a prayer about it over the weekend. So we did, several times, and we decided that'd be the best thing for me and my health. Because I already lost about ten more pounds since I've been homeless here for seven months.
Right now.
And it's, uh, it's getting to me. But I know we're turning it over to good hands, all of you, with Carol and Sandy and you and, and Ben. I know it's turning it over to good hands.
Thank you, sir.
And I know there'll be progress within it. And if, anytime I can help you all, any of you, just give me a call.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, much appreciated. All right, at this time, uh, considering the offer of resignation by Mayor Bowling, uh, you've heard the discussion, any comments from my fellow board members before we move forward?
I'd just like to say, thank you, Mayor Bowling.
Very good, uh, that being said, and hearing nothing else, uh, is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, is there?
Motion to accept by Alderman Adams.
I second it.
Second by Alderwoman Keith. Madam Reporter, take a vote, please.
That was Sandy.
It was me.
Uh, as you were, Alderwoman Madison. Madam Reporter, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Keith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes.
A motion carries unanimously, and again, uh, thank you so much, Richard. We will be coming back together, uh, in the near future in, concerning now Mayor Emeritus, Richard Bowling, and I'll notify the public on when that particular ceremony will be. Thank you very much. With, upon the resignation and retirement officially of Mayor Richard Bowling, I hereby assume duties as mayor and town manager moving forward. Moving on, uh, unfortunately, again, we'll discuss a resignation, and, uh, that is, uh, our good friend and fellow board member, Alderman Eric Ward. Uh, Eric, uh, came on to the board as an appointed alderman, and then was elected in twenty nineteen May, uh, and, uh, has, has been a strong voice on this board. He really has. Eric, uh, it's the desire of his family, uh, to move back to where their hometown of Johnson City. And, uh, and it's going to be near, uh, his wife's work, and it's going to work a lot better. He, uh, actually, his children attend school there and a lot of different things. And, uh, so he offered me his resignation on Monday morning. That being said, he is not present tonight for comments. Is there any further discussion with the board? Great, uh, hearing none and seeing none, do we have a motion to accept?
I make a motion to accept.
Motion to accept by Alderwoman Keith.
I second it.
Second by Alderwoman Madison. Madam Reporter, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Keith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously and by majority. Uh, we will also be honoring Alderman, uh, Ward as well at a later date with something. All right, now let's get into the meat of this thing. Next item on the agenda is discussion in action of ordinance number twenty-two-two-zero-zero-six, an ordinance to provide for the general revenue of the town of Bluff City for the fiscal year of twenty-two-two, twenty-two-three. Mr. Frye, please publish ordinance.
Be it therefore ordained by the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the Town of Bluff City, Tennessee, there's hereby levied on all taxable real, personal, mixed property located within municipal boundaries of the Town of Bluff City, Tennessee for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, an ed-bolorum tax of one dollar and, and point one-seven-nine cents for each one hundred dollars of assessed value. Taxes shall be due and payable on or before May one, twenty-two-three. Amount of penalty and interest shall be the same as that applicable to county property taxes set out in the tax statutes of the state of Tennessee. The purpose of this tax levy ordinance is to provide funding for the appropriation ordinance for fiscal year twenty-two-two, twenty-two-three, number twenty-two-two-dice-zero-zero-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, uh, now we'll begin the discussion portion. Uh, this only concerns the property tax, first and foremost. We're not talking about the budget here, only the property taxes. And I'm proud to announce that we do not intend to raise the property tax. It is the same rate as last year, and we're really, really proud of that in a tough economic year. So, is there any discussion among the board concerning this ordinance? This is on first reading. If there is no discussion, do we have a motion to adopt?
I make a motion.
Motion to adopt by Alderwoman Keith.
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Adams. Madam Reporter, take a vote, please.
Alderwoman Keith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes.
Motion carries and passes unanimously and by majority. Next item on the agenda is discussion in action on ordinance number twenty-two-two-zero-zero-seven, appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-two-three. Mr. Frye, please publish your ordinance.
Be it therefore ordained by the Board of Mayor and Alderman of the Town of Bluff City, Tennessee, there's hereby appropriated for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-two-three, following sums of money set aside for the departments and purposes specified herein. General fund, one million, six hundred, eighteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Water and sewer fund, one million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Sanitation fund, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. Debt service fund, seventy-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Special police drug fund, four thousand, two hundred dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Frye, now we'll open the discussion portion of the budget. And with, uh, at the will and pleasure of the board, uh, I present, I, I prepared a, a presentation today for the board's attention and review, and if you'll allow me just a few minutes to go with it and go through it with you. Uh, you'll notice on the second page, you'll see the, the comptroller's guidance, and, uh, Ms. Sharon, our CMFO, received this guidance from the comptroller, uh, yesterday evening, late, actually at seven, seventeen PM. So there's haste with this action and behind this action. Basically, it says, uh, uh, to surmise, when are we getting the budget? So, it would be, uh, in good measure, in the best interest of the town, if we could discuss the budget now and go ahead and make a decision.
With due respect, Mayor, I would like to postpone discussing the budget because I have a lot more questions concerning that.
Would you, would you mind if I finished the presentation?
Well, well, you, well, I don't mind, but you said that you would like to do it, so I was just answering before we went further.
Okay, very good.
I thought that would save us some time.
Yeah, well, if, if you'll displeasure me a little bit, uh...
Go right ahead.
So, the highlights of next year's budget, and the public's listening, and I want you to, are these. Uh, we didn't, no property tax increase, which is huge. Uh, we are reviewing, uh, an increase on the utility rates and sewer rates, and let me speak to that. So, this last year, unfortunately, we had to do a refurbishment of the water, our water tank, and it cost a whole bunch of money. So, we, in turn, I guess, in lack of a better way to say it, we went over our budget for about ninety-nine thousand dollars. We, uh, the only way, the way this thing works is that in the accounting, we cannot, we have money in the general fund, we have money in the reserve, but we cannot move money to something that is revenue-creating. So, you, now we've got a new high. We have to show the state, and then you, that we are, we've, we've figured out a way to put money back into that business and make it solvent, make it work. So, the, the increase that we're discussing would be four percent. So, on about a hundred-dollar water bill, we're talking a little less than two dollars.
Four percent, a hundred is four.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I know, thank you, Ms. Torman. Please don't interrupt me again. So, anyway, next thing that we have in this budget for twenty-two-three is increases, needed increases for our employees. There's disparity in our wages. We want to retain the best folks that we possibly can. We offer the best benefits we possibly can, but we are, there's competition. We're going to, if agreed, implement the Watson, uh, e-ticket program headed up by Chief Tepu. Uh, many departments are on this program, and it will automate our citation process. Right now, we're back in a, you know, car fifty-four era, where they're taking our hand and writing out a paper ticket, and it's going through a bunch of hands, and it's cumbersome, and just outdated. This, uh, this program will be twice as efficient. It will offer us cost savings, and it will increase our revenue. Next thing, uh, we have found it absolutely necessary, uh, after surviving COVID, to hire another police officer. Uh, we, we got into a little trouble money-wise, and we're okay, but the overtime from the COVID period sucked the bank dry on that particular line of salaries. We also, as we grow, need an additional police officer to keep our streets safe. We are, uh, encouraging and happy to receive the invitation for Detective Smith, who's actually here tonight, to join the joint drug task force. Drugs are a big deal here in Bluff City, believe it or not. Uh, deals are going on right now in the ordinary limits of Bluff City. And not only that, but we need to partner with the entire community in, in trying to stomp these things out. Uh, with that, uh, we, we will have to pay a fee to be included in this task force, annually, but we try it year for year. And the good thing is, if a bust is made, monies from the task force are evenly distributed to every agency. And most time, that's very successful for everybody. We, uh, we've said, and I want to give former Mayor Richard Bowling and of course Sharon all the credit for this, because I, I wouldn't part, maybe just a little part of it. Better prediction of fuel costs, nobody thought fuel was going to go to four dollars, four fifty. When we budgeted last year, we were in the twos. We used fifteen hundred in fuel, uh, four gallons of fuel this last billing period, right Sharon? Wasn't it fifteen hundred and four?
Fifteen hundred.
Thirty-four miles of roads that we maintain. Nobody saw that coming. We, we've put a better number against it in this upcoming budget, more realistically. Police labor, I just spoke to, uh, in order to keep folks off overtime and to not abuse our officers or put them in danger, it's necessary to bring on another officer. We have to do that. We put together a, the best solution in a very turbulent economy. Inflation just went up to nine point three percent today. So it's up a half a percent, I just looked at it before I came in here. So, how do you, how do you fix that number? You know what I'm saying, how do you figure that out? And what we put together, we think is our very, very, very best way to try to predict where inflation's going to go. Unpredictable sales tax, so if the economy continues to go like it is, a good portion of the way we pay the bills around here is through sales tax. Now, what if that declines in six months? Can you count on that number? Probably not. At this point, we're, we're all the county, and I see Commissioner Glover sitting back there. We're very fortunate in revenues right now, don't mean we're going to have it next month. We're not willing to bank on that number. So, we've tried to put together the best solution we can in an unpredictable sales tax revenue environment. And then the last thing is overtime management and cost savings requirements. Uh, you know, I became mayor, what, about fifteen minutes ago formally? Uh, I will work with the department heads, and so will CMFO, to try to come up with, by department, better ways to become leaner and to reduce our cost across the board. And the ideas that in my two days thus far of being here are phenomenal, and I'm certain that we can cut costs wherever we can. So, thank you for pleasuring me, if you will, but I will come to you now because I am now the budget director. I am solid with the budget that you have in front of you. I have sat down for hours with our CMFO. I've heard the recommendation of the former mayor, and I would suggest, please, that we move forward with this. I do not have a vote, but I am giving you my expert opinion. No ma'am, no questions right now.
Can I speak?
Oh, it's open for discussion. Alderwoman Keith, you have the floor.
Everything looks good, I agree with everything, but like I said from the get-go, my concern is the increase. Uh, a citizen had asked, is it mandated? No, I don't think it's mandated.
I can speak to that if you like.
Well, I, I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But if you don't mind, I would like to do, if it's just for the increase, uh, we could just have a little short, uh, workshop, uh, Wednesday, next week. Everything else, I'm fine with. But when I ran in the election, I'm made, I told my supporters that I would not vote for increases. And I am a woman of my word, if I tell you something, I'm going to do it. But, at the same time, if there is no way out, and before I would want the citizens to get an increase next year of ten percent, then, you know, I would talk more about it. But I like for my supporters to know where I stand.
I appreciate that.
Because I respect my supporters, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here, is for the people.
I appreciate that. Uh, thank you.
But everything looks good.
Uh, if I'm, uh, please, Alderman Adams, you have the floor.
I was going to say, uh, nobody wants an increase. But what we were talking about is it wasn't mandated by the state. But what is mandated by the state is for us to perform service on our water tower every five years.
Yes.
And that is a huge portion of this number. And we're really left with the choice of, do we kick the can, continue to kick the can down the road?
Yeah.
Or do we address it now with an increase? Or we can basically send a budget to the state that has a ninety-nine thousand dollar shortfall in it, which we probably don't want to do. And i- if they do approve that, then we're looking at a ninety-nine thousand dollar shortfall we're going to have to pay for at some point. And we can either take a small increase now or keep kicking it and keep kicking it until we get hit with a twelve percent, fifteen percent, something like that, which you will feel in a bill, rather than, you know, I, I'm not sure what the average bill in Blood City is, but, you know, if it's a hundred dollars, your bill will be a hundred and four dollars. That's a lot easier pill to swallow, in my opinion, than a hundred and fifteen dollar bill that we're going to get in two years from now. So I mean, I don't want to, I live in the city too. I don't want to pay more for my water, but, you know, as a fiduciary for the city, we've got to fix this problem, and I want to do it in the least painful way possible. And I mean, I agree with the four percent increase.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but since we're talking about this, you know, even today, one of my supporters thanked me for letting them know what's going on. I want to know, I want to be able to explain to them exactly why we're doing this. That's why I want a workshop, so you can explain it to me, and I can let the people know.
I appreciate that.
That's much to ask for.
Well, uh, the only thing, and like I say, I don't vote on this.
I know you, no, I know what you can do.
The only, you, you mentioned the salaries, and let me briefly speak about the salaries. There is an increase for every single employee, monies allotted for every single employee. But here's the new twist. The new twist is, all we're asking, all we're going to do as a board, or you will do as a board, is allocate the funds. We are in place with an evaluation system, and Mayor Bowling had already began that work, and I will continue with it. No employee will be awarded a dime until the evaluations have been properly conducted. And a job description that suits them, that is agreed upon by the board, is placed before them and says, this is the expectation, this was the expectation, and they can be rated fairly by their direct supervisor. I don't, I don't supervise your department. You do, you do, you do, right? So yes, we're asking to allocate some needed funds. The, the, imagine you're a public works, or we, the, the job description is now maintenance worker, right? And you're making less than Chick-fil-A, and you're out here at one o'clock in the morning in C Row, and you're running a backhoe. Really? That doesn't make any sense. Or you have police officers that are going out here and, you know, busting, making a meth bust right down the road here on eleven E. Could potentially be killed, and we're not paying them fairly. But to Carol's point, there has to be a yardstick, there has to be goals, there has to be a measure, and the good old boy is gone, in my opinion.
Amen.
While I'm mayor, it's gone. You earn it, and you'll get it. We take very good care of our employees here. We provide and pay for all of their benefits. We need to shore up the wages a little bit, and we need to award the performers, the high performers better. As you say, good, better, best, right? And the lesser performers, not so good. So as far as the salary goes, everybody, that's it. All we're looking at tonight is allocating a certain amount of thousand dollars into water and sewer, streets and highways, administration, and the police department, and the town manager. With your approval, as we step through this process, we'll manage the evaluation process. You'll approve the job description with me, and then we'll move forward from there. Again, uh, I'm, I'm going to quit beating this horse, but I strong, no, ma'am, there's no questions while we're discussing things. I, I strongly, strongly recommend that we vote on and pass this budget, and I, I'm shutting her down from there.
Well, once again, everything looks good, and this, this is serious. But if we could just meet one day, just, I just got some questions, but everything else I am pleased with.
Well, ask the question.
Well, I would rather ask more questions so I can let my supporters know. I don't want them to get a surprise. I mean, we got to remember now, our trash pickup, it, it's when a, not, it's not our fault.
Respectively, yes, it hasn't went up yet.
Yeah, but it's going to, it's going to. So that's another dollar added on. And I'd like for people to know, I don't want people to be surprised.
Okay.
And I don't think I'm asking too much, just to ask a few little questions in a workshop. I'm very pleased with this. Everything looks good. I have no complaints. I just have a question about that.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Keith. Any other comments from the board? Hearing and seeing none. One more time, any other discussion?
No, no. I want to say thank you, Mayor, for explaining everything.
Okay, very good. Hearing and seeing none. On the ordinance, Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
We haven't had any motion, should have done that.
Oh, as you were. Thank you so much. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to, to approve it.
All right, motion to approve by Alderman Adams. Motion has not been seconded and did not carry. So that motion now has been withdrawn. That being said, for the formality of this board, is there a motion to postpone this item?
I make a motion to postpone.
I, I hear a motion to postpone from Alderman Keith.
I second it.
Seconded by Alderman Madison. Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderman Keith.
Yes.
Alderman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes. Motion to postpone passes by majority. Thank you, ladies and Mr. Adams. The next three items on the agenda are commensurate with the budget that we just postponed. So that being said, I see no reason to publish the ordinances for those. So I would like, if you would, for someone to craft a motion for discussion and action of ordinance twenty-two zero zero eight, zero zero nine, and zero one zero to postpone.
I make a motion.
Motion to postpone those three ordinance by Alderman Keith.
I second it.
Seconded by Alderman Madison. Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderman Keith.
Yes.
Alderman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority. These ordinance items will be postponed, and I will announce a meeting very, very soon. We, uh, just as an administrative note, I will confer with the board whether a workshop is necessary or not, and we'll move forward with that as soon as possible. Mind you, uh, fellow board members, we must move quickly. We are under great pressure by the comptroller to turn this budget in. I know it's, it wasn't our fault and all that, but we're here today. So thank you very much for your honesty. All right, very good. Next item on the agenda is report from Mayor and Town Manager. Well, uh, I tell you, it's been wonderful the last couple of days. It is, it, it's been wonderful. I cannot say enough about, uh, my teammates on the board and the staff welcoming me and, and taking good care of me and saying, no, just like my twins, my twin granddaughters, no, no, Jeff, yeah, go ahead and do it. And they have just called, and, uh, more especially Sharon. She, uh, she's really been there for me. Uh, Richard has, uh, the transition was amazing. Uh, I came in first thing Monday morning, Richard was right here and accommodating me and showing me exactly what was what and what button not to push and, and all this kind of stuff, and I can't say enough about how good it is. Now, uh, in regard to my duties, there was some concern, I think I heard, uh, in, in regard to my duties. I've been thinking about this for a long time, obviously. Uh, I, I'm fully prepared to fulfill the role of Town Manager and Mayor. There are some things coming up here in the near future we'll be considering as far as the formalization of the Town Manager, but there's still more discussion to be had by the board, and we'll probably address that in this next workshop. And, uh, I, from my personal commitment, I just want to do the best job I can. I mean, uh, if you'll pleasure me just a minute more, uh, I, I met with, uh, my good friend, Richard Venable, today, and, uh, I told him a story that a little boy, uh, me, I'm not going to get to it, but, you know, on Main Street, over fifty years ago, there was this black-headed pretty lady driving a sixty-one Ford down Main Street, and the brakes squeaked on that thing at the intersection now where the old City Hall and First Baptist Church are. And there was a little boy standing in a red leather seat, standing up, and he said, Mama, what, what is that place? And that pretty lady, and it's hot, it's July, and her, her hair is blue-black, and it's blowing in the wind. And, uh, there was a man standing there, and he had a campaign hat on and a bunch of stars. He looked like a French Admiral, man, and a big old sixty-three Ford with a dome light on top of it. And, uh, I said, who is that man? And she's, uh, I, that boy, Chief Davis. And he, uh, he winked at my mama. And, uh, I said, so what's that place, Mama? And she said, City Hall. And I said, Mama, I'll be the mayor someday. Here I am. Here I am.
Amen.
And I'm not going to take it lightly. I can tell you that. So enough emotional, uh, testimonies. I appreciate the opportunity, and I won't disappoint. Thank you. All right, report from the Town Attorney, Mr. Frye. Do you have a report, sir?
Um, just a short one. I've begun to work on collection of the, uh, twenty-twenty-one delinquent, uh, property taxes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on, discussion and action financial report. Uh, we'll hear from the very capable Ms. Sharon Green, if you would, please.
Fund balances, I saw June thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. General fund, two million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-two. Sanitation fund, forty thousand, one hundred and thirty-four. Special police fund, eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-four. Debt service, one hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight. Sinking fund, three thousand, ninety-four. Water sewer fund, eight hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-three. Total, total fund balance, three million, two hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-five.
Thank you, Madam Recorder. Uh, hearing such, uh, any discussion on the fund balances? Any questions there? Hearing none and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve or affirm?
I make a motion.
Motion to approve by Alderman Keith.
I second it.
Seconded by Alderman Adams. Madam Recorder, take a vote, please.
Alderman Keith.
Yes.
Alderman Madison.
Yes.
Alderman Adams.
Yes.
Motion passes by majority and unanimously. Thank you, Madam Recorder. Next item on the agenda is our city officials' briefings. Chief Tipu, would you mind to approach your podium?
Good evening, Mayor, board members, and citizens.
Good evening, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
I look forward to, uh, working with you in the future. I think things are going to be good. I see a lot of good, positive things going on, and very excited about things the board and everyone. And Mayor Bowling, thank you, sir, for what you've done for us. We appreciate that, and, and Sharon, you and everybody involved in the hard work that goes into our budget stuff. So thanks so much for that. For the month of July, we had a total of two hundred and sixty calls, had a hundred and ninety-eight citations, issued sixty-five warnings, had patrolled sixty-five hundred and thirty-six miles, had twenty-two arrests, fifteen offense reports, eleven alarms, had eleven accidents, twenty-eight MSD in-house reports, uh, eight domestic calls. That's up a lot more. You don't want any, but that's higher than normal, so hopefully things can settle down there. And then going on down, we had thirteen drug violations this month. They're picking up a lot, and they're going to pick up a bunch because we're coming after you. The town's allowed me to take steps to really be aggressive with what we're doing, and I give you my word, we are going to get it, and we are going to get it serious and down to business as we possibly can because we don't want it in our town. This is a good town, a beautiful town, and people here deserve our very, very, very best, and that's what we offer, that's what we're going to do. But that's possible because what you all, when I come to you and stand before you and tell you the need and the concerns and what I think makes our town better, you listen to me and you, 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 you help with that, and I appreciate you so much for the things you, you have done for that, so. But outside of that, everybody's, uh, really upbeat, everybody's motivated. As I said, everybody's pumped and excited, and let's get it done.
Thanks, Chief. Great report.
I would like to say this, uh, Mayor.
Oh, please.
I'd like to thank the chief. I brought my grandbabies down the other day.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they're going around, they call to their daddy, they're junior police, and they met Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I opened, uh, I opened the door, and here comes a little boy running at me, and he jumps up in my arms. So very, very good.
They're so excited. Thank you.
You know, that's a, that's one thing about it, uh, uh, either elected or member of the staff of this town, I'm proud to say, everybody here is a community relations officer. And more especially Greg's department, I mean, half of what they do is community relations. They're out there wiping out crime, but, you know, we all, uh, we all need to be the best ambassador we can for this town. And we appreciate everybody that's not elected or on the staff, their ambassadorship as well. All right, at this time, we'll hear from my, my good friend, Mr. Alan Multry, our Public Works Supervisor and Water Treatment Plant Operator.
Good evening, Mayor, board. Um, in the Sewer Department, we are operating, uh, without any issues at this current moment. Uh, we do have a couple of projects that do need to get done, um, uh, as in the streets and, uh, Water Department. Um, we have been fixing a bunch of leaks around town. We've been, uh, having the tank hovering around, uh, fifty feet, and since we've been allowing the tank to get up to around fifty feet, we are seeing quite a bit of leak with, uh, with the increased system pressure or whatnot. But we are fixing those weak spots, and, uh, we are getting that taken care of. Uh, we do got a lot of projects, uh, like on Railroad Street. We got, um, a chunk of asphalt that needs to be repaved, uh, and we need to get that done at some point because it's almost going on a year that that's been like that. Uh, but, uh, soon as we can get this budget and all of that passed, we'll be able to get a lot more accomplished in a short time. But beyond that, uh, everything has been going good. Uh, I just hope we can come up with the resolve on some of our other issues. That's the pump station and some of these other things that we got ongoing. I just would like to see some of these projects kind of come to some kind of closure because a lot has been just hanging there, and we kind of need to move because we've kind of been in the stalemate. But, uh, other than that, everything has been going fairly well. I do appreciate everything you all have been doing, and I just hope we can continue doing what we're currently doing. That's all I have at this current time, but if you have, uh, any questions, I'll be more than happy to field your questions.
Any questions for Alan?
I just believe that, um, fuel stores and things take place and things happen.
Well, I hope to see that soon.
I believe that. It's going to happen.
Uh, any, anything else?
No, sir. Thanks for your time this evening, Alan. Really appreciate your work and your leadership. All right, that's great. Now, we'll move on to, uh, comments from the board members, uh, if you would. Alderman Keith, you're first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor, and truly, I, I- Truly, I, I, I'm kind of lost for words. I, I, I just, I feel really good. I feel blessed. I feel like we are going to continue to move forward. I feel like we're going to start seeing some more things, good things, take place, and also, I think I can speak on behalf of, uh, our aldermen. Uh, I know they stand for what is right, and I just want to say, mayor, we stand with you for what is right, and let's continue to move forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Carol. Those are good words. All right. Alderwoman Madison, would you please?
Yes, I want to thank everyone for coming. Please come back.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. My good friend, Alderman Adams, would you please?
Well, um, I, I like the direction that we're headed. I think, you know, we are trying to improve and make things better, and I mean, with former mayor, Mr. Bowlin, and you, Mr. Bow.
Thank you.
Um, we're, we're, I can see we're making strides. I, I'm new to this board, but every meeting that I have been to since the beginning, I, I, we're thoughtful people who are really trying to make good decisions and do what's best for our city. Update us, get us out of old habits, and bring us into the new world that we're embracing right now. And we're, I, I promise you, we're all doing the best job that we can.
Thanks, Ben, and, and so are you, uh, from your fellow board members, your teammates. Thank you a lot. All right, thank you. Uh, moving on, then, we have the distinct privilege of enjoying Commissioner Herschel Glover as a visitor today, and his lovely wife, Brenda. So, uh, Commissioner, would you like to come up and, uh, have a few words, or do you have a few words for us?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to, uh, I wanted to attend tonight to, uh, to say that, uh, I'm, I'm kind of sad to see Mr. Bowlin go, and Mr. Ward. Uh, Mr. Bowlin, every conversation that you and I have had over the years has been very professional, and I want to appreciate, uh, appreciate everything you've done for the town, Mr. Ward, too. You're going to be greatly missed. And, uh, every conversation that we had, you treated me with the utmost respect, and I want to tell you, I, I certainly appreciate that, and Mr. Ward, too.
And, and again, uh, thank you all for, for letting me speak. Um, our budget, uh, we, uh, done first reading on it Thursday night of, of last week, and, uh, we'll have a special call and meeting next Thursday night, the eleventh, and, uh, that will be, uh, I just want everyone to know that Bluff City's ten thousand dollars for the park and, and so forth was in the budget this year.
We appreciate that.
And I think it will be, uh, uh, will be passed, and, uh, also, the ARPA money that, uh, that's, that Solon County received, some of that is, 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 uh, trickling back into the county now. Some of the fire departments, volunteer fire departments this past week has received some of the things that they ordered. Uh, I don't know exactly what Bluff City volunteer ordered, but, uh, some of them got washers and dryers for their turnout gear, things like that, so that's coming back in for them, and we appreciate, uh, we appreciate all the work that the volunteers do. Uh, we done a package this year where, first time in Solon County history that all the volunteer fire departments are treated the same. The same amount of money EvoCA gets, the same amount of money Bluff City Volunteer Department gets, and that's the first time in county history that's been done. And the cities basically are the same, too. Kingsport City, Bristol City, and we done it on a five-year plan. So, when we come back in five years and the percentage is added on, everyone will be treated the same. And again, the budget, I would like to announce, uh, due to unknown circumstances or something drastic happened, uh, we will not have a tax increase this year, so there will not be a property tax for Solon County. And, uh, we'll meet on that next Thursday and discuss that, but, uh, thank you all, and, uh, enjoyed, uh, enjoyed, uh, speaking before against the night, if there's anything I can do to help Bluff City in the future. I'd like to say that Bluff City is the best-kept little secret in East Tennessee. Bluff City has so much to offer. You've got the lake back up now, you've got a lot of folks coming into the area, and you've also got a museum that's being built up here that's going to bring a lot of people to the town. People in Kingsport are talking about this museum, and out, out of the counties, people are talking about it, and I think it's going to be very exciting, and I think it's going to bring a lot of tourism to Bluff City. And again, thank you all. Appreciate your hard work. Y'all keep it up, and, uh, if we can do anything, let us know. Try to come next Thursday night if you can. We would enjoy having you. Six o'clock, the eleventh. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Glover, for, uh, for visiting us, and of course, Brenda, as well. Moving on, then, i- is there any old business to discuss?
We're still moving on with the park and everything.
Absolutely. Uh, at this point, just waiting on confirmation that we, we should see installation in or about the first of September or so.
Is that still on track?
Still on track, still on track. The ship date, the arrival date, looks like it's still going to be the third week of August, and then the installation takes about two to three days, so we're, we're hopeful that, uh, if, if I were going to plan an, an event, uh, to honor and open that, I would push it down around Heritage Day or so, and that should give us time for them to finish, and then if we need to do any additional landscaping or anything like that.
We want to see if, because Sharon says she would help with it, uh, get invitations or something, so we can invite people.
Yeah, absolutely. The town will help with that.
Okay, okay.
Certainly. So, we're, we're excited about that, and it's coming up, the, uh, they're just like, uh, those folks are like everybody else, they're a little slow to respond, but, uh, that was the last update I received.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, any other old business to discuss? All right, moving on to new business. Is there any new business that needs to be brought to the floor?
Well, since your vice mayor seat has been vacated, but I, I think that's some new business to discuss as far as who's going to take vice mayor's seat.
Well, uh, at this point, a- as you know, Ben, we have two open board seats, and I'll just go ahead and say this publicly. So, the seat I just vacated tonight, and the seat that Mr. Eric Ward vacated, uh, actually expire in twenty-twenty-four. So, there's an additional two years on those seats. As you, as everyone knows in the public, uh, we are in an election cycle with two board seats, uh, actually Alderman Adams and Alderwoman Madison's seats, and then obviously now my office i- is a seat that is for the November election. So, uh, what, uh, my plan is, if the board agrees, is tomorrow, I will, I will present a formal announcement to fill those two vacant seats, and that will be the priority, and...
Go ahead. And then will we appoint, uh, vice mayor or whatever, have?
Well, at this point, you'll remember, when we appoint a vice mayor or an officer, we have to have an overwhelming majority.
Right.
You'll remember, when I was appointed vice mayor, we relied on the board, and then we brought Sandy on. You see what I'm saying? So, my priority at this point is to fill the board's seat first. Let's do that, and try to plus up the ba- the board hopefully back to five. Mind you, in November, when the mayoral term, the one I'm sitting in, runs out after the election, we're going to have to appoint a vice mayor anyway for the next four years, so...
But we can appoint a vice mayor, though, pretty much any time, though, if that counts.
I don't think so, Paul. I think we have to have four, don't we? Uh, when I, when I was appointed, we'd lost Ray, and Richard became mayor.
Well, I'll have to look at that. I don't know if it's two-thirds or not.
Yeah, but there's something to it. But, the, anyway, for the public, the most important thing is that we advertise, and we're doing that right now, matter of fact, if you're interested. Reach out to a board member, or reach out to me, and, uh, we will fairly and uncompromisingly look at everyone, uh, and I'll let you know the criteria, and I'm the point of contact, if you want to know what that is, so. And then we can work with who's going to be the vice mayor. Now, we will have to, pretty quickly, though, just in case of an emergency, appoint another signatory, because at this point, Sharon and I are the only signatories.
Yeah, that was what I was thinking.
Right.
Uh, it, it's something, you know, if you ended up in the hospital or something.
Right.
Um, we don't have anybody.
So, we'll move quickly.
So, that'd be very important to do this quick.
We need to do that pretty quickly, and, uh, I'm hoping that, you know, tomorrow morning, we're going to have twenty very motivated, passionate citizens that want to step up here and come and help us on the board. That'd be great. That'd be great, and they'll be fairly considered, and we'll move.
No idea, Carolyn.
Yeah. Wow. And we, and we'll do that. We'll, uh, everyone will be treated fairly and evaluated fairly by the board. So, that's, that's the plan. Any other questions concerning that? Uh, any other discussion for the evening? Hearing and seeing none, this board is adjourned.